People on the call are pretty familiar with the deal. I know it takes a couple of times to understand all the financing. So if someone has only heard the financing once or twice, I would just encourage them to watch another video and I think it takes two to three times before you can put all the pieces together. Just on the timeline, we have a couple of updates. So everyone knows the first time we saw what was in the development terms was on October 26th, when they had the committee of the whole meeting to talk about the gas plant historic redevelopment. And then the final draft terms were released on April 25th. So sometimes you'll hear people say it's too late to get involved or to have comment. But you just have to let them know that we haven't had that much time that we actually knew what was in the development terms themselves. And then there was a committee of the whole meeting on May 9th for the redevelopment itself, and then a community planning and preservation committee meeting on May 14th. And that was to talk about the rezoning and approving the development agreement and pushing it toward the city council meeting that we just had. So the May 16th city council meeting was when a lot of council members discussed feeling rushed and feeling like they weren't ready, the documents weren't ready to be reviewed, that there were still some things that needed to be updated and finalized. And they pushed for an additional many of the whole meeting and for more time. So that did result in an additional committee, the whole meeting, you can see a couple of lines down was is scheduled for July 9th. And that's on the redevelopment. So last week, they had a committee of the whole meeting, the first committee of the whole meeting on the stadium, that was June 12th. And then the next day, they had all day city council meeting. The city council meeting addressed extending the in-town CRA as well as rezoning seven of the parcels for higher height construction as well as setting the date for voting on the development agreement. So a lot of us were there at that meeting and we were able to speak in public comments. Sometimes we were able to speak at least twice, some people spoke three times. Obviously, the majority of the people speaking were opposed to extending the CRA, which now has been in existence for 40 years and they're asking to tack on another 20 years to the CRA. So it's getting to be outside of what is normal or typical for a CRA. There was a lot of questions and comments from members of the public expressing concern that those tax dollars need to be reinvested into the community itself through the general fund and had concerns with those funds being diverted off to pay for the stadium. Unfortunately, that was approved by to three, the three voting no or Lizette Hanowitz, Richie Floyd and John Mohammed. The five voting yes or Deborah Fig Sanders, Copley Gertis, Gina Driscoll and Montanari and Brandy Gabbert. The votes were similar for all three resolutions, including the rezoning and setting the date for July 11th. Many members of the public asked for additional time because there were so many things that still aren't completed or finalized within the draft development agreements. However, they tried to sell it to city council with the idea that it's an optimistic date. If they need to, they can extend it, but they want to keep it moving forward quickly. And so they went ahead and put it on the schedule and many council people asked if the documents would even be ready, a couple of them asked the city attorney directly. And she stated that they cannot guarantee dates on when documents will be available, but they will take every effort to make that happen. So they're on break until July 7th and then they come back and have to vote on July 11th. So that means they're going to have to be reviewing the documents over their vacation time, or they're not going to have that much time to review them. So the additional committee, the whole meeting is on the 9th and then they'll vote on July 11th. Currently, it may get extended if the documents are not complete. And the county commissioner will also vote. I had heard something about the end of July, so we'll see if that's the case. This is just a review of the stadium subsidy and the amount of $287.5 million. The fact that the land was appraised at 279 million and they're selling it to the raise for 105 million, which is a discount of 174 million. And the razor asking for 130 for infrastructure as well as a $12 million lift station. And then the county will be contributing $312.5 million toward the stadium. With interest, that amount for the city is, I think it's actually 786 million and the county is 586 million. This is just for the real estate. So just, I always like to bring up this example about how we're getting paid. I'm just going to skip ahead one slide. If you can see it, the red arrow, it shows what Heinz is going to pay in the first 12 years, which is $50 million. And you can see, starting in 2025, they paid 4.4 million, then seven, 4.4, 2.4. It's for an average of about 4.4 a year for a total of 50 million in the first 12 years on the 105 million dollar purchase price of the land. And I like to bring up this example of the warehouse that Heinz brought bought recently in November of 2023. And they paid 46 million dollars for it. So I just think it's funny to think about offering the seller four million dollars a year over 12 years as a purchase price and being able to sell the property the next day to someone else. So I just think it's, it points out how little we're being paid every year and we're not getting a down payment or interest on that 4 million per year. It also shows how money is coming out of the existing in-town CRA here in the second column. These are existing funds, they total, I can't see it, it's about 60 million, I think. That's what's already in the in-town CRA, this is county tax money. So when the county says it's not tax money that's being obligated by the county, that's not correct because they are using this amount. And then the rest will be bed tax. And so they say, well, that's already in the TIF fund. And it's like, yeah, but it's not obligated yet. So they are obligating some of the county taxes with this project. And then this is the TIF funds for the city itself. You can see extending the in-town CRA until 2042. And then you can see that the payments for the stadium and infrastructure jump over to the general fund. So in 2043, you see 23 million dollars coming out of the general fund. And just for reference, our affordable housing line item in our budget for the city of St. Petersburg is about 23 million dollars. So that's what we're going to be responsible for is an additional budget line item starting in 2043. And I always like to encourage people to watch this on YouTube. It's maybe 15 minutes long. It's called Why Taxpayers Pay for NFL Stadiums? And it's the same for baseball stadiums. It talks about how direct approval by elected officials can be used to avoid a referendum. And it says that public subsidies often receive approval directly from elected officials without going through a public referendum. And the reason they're able to do that is because they use funds from the in-town CRA to pay for bonds. And I do believe a couple of council members asked that to make the point that that avoided having to have a referendum. So not only are we obligating a significant portion of our property taxes for over 30 years to pay for the stadium and the infrastructure. The way that they're doing it avoids a referendum. So now we don't even get a chance to vote. And I'll get back to what the poll said about wanting a referendum. I think it was 86% of the public believe that they should be able to have a referendum to vote on this deal. This talks about tax increment financing, which are called TIF funds. And the mayor has said there is not property taxes because they get converted from property taxes to a designation of TIF. But you can see the first word in a TIF is tax. So what they're saying is, well, these funds are set aside for projects, but they originate from property taxes. And then they say, well, we have enough property taxes. It's not like we're going to be short on other things. But more and more people are going to move into that in-town CRA. And they're going to have services that they demand. And also over time, the cost of services is going to increase. So over time, there is going to be a increased cost for services for residents and we're not going to necessarily be able to cover it because we're going to divert 50% of the property taxes from that CRA since it was established into the stadium and infrastructure subsidies. So that could potentially leave a hole that other taxpayers will have to make up. And that's where the concern about increased property taxes comes in. And maybe it won't happen on day one, but it's hard to to believe that it wouldn't happen over 30 years. And it's also hard to believe that something with our economy wouldn't happen where our growth slows down or there's some type of event that is an impact economically to our city. And then we don't have the cushion or the funds or the borrowing capability. So I think that's the main concern of a lot of people in our group. This is just a boundary map, just so people see where the in-town CRA is, and you can see it includes quite a bit of the most valuable real estate on Central Avenue, as well as Beach Drive and many of the high rises. And it just shows where the new stadium is going to be located. If people ask, you can tell them it's going to be on the east side closer to 16th Street over here. Actually, I think that says 10th Street, sorry, 10th Street. And then this is how we're going to be paying for the infrastructure. There's four phases. 40 million in 2024 for a total of 130 million. And I'd just like to remind everyone that John Mohammed asked in a council or city committee of the whole meeting, what would happen if we failed to fulfill this obligation? And the answer by their attorney was that the city could be sued. And you can see from phase A of the infrastructure, now you know where the stadium is going to be located. You can see quite a bit of the infrastructure. Will serve the stadium itself. So I think that even though they try to say that infrastructure is for the real estate development, you can see that a lot of the infrastructures for the stadium itself. So it's almost actually an additional subsidy for the stadium. Again, it just shows how we're going to be paying for all these different things, where the sources of money will come from. So for the 746 million dollar total, there's 285 million coming out of the general fund, 62 million coming out of existing TIF county funds, 349 coming out of the in-town CRA TIF funds, plus 50 million from the raise. And you don't even see the other 55 million. And I think that they pay that parcel by parcel. And again, here's just the minimum development over the entire 30 years of the project. You can see there's 3,800 residential market rate units, 1,250 affordable units. And then you see a million square feet of all these different types of real estate, commercial, office, retail, everything, arts, recreation, entertainment. Half of that has to be Class A office space. And you see in the, the end of the project, at least 50,000 must be civic or museum, 400 rooms for hotels and a median space for a total of 50,000 and only 10 acres of open space. And Lizette Hanowitz pointed out that we gave them credit in the discount on the land. I think it was 14 or 15 acres, but we're only getting 10 out of it. And then one daycare. This is just the first 10 years of what is in the minimum development. It has to be built by 2035. You can see that 100 and, sorry, let's say 333,000 square feet of real estate of these different uses must be built. Half of which is office space. And to get a frame of reference, the new orange station or the central project where the old police station is, is a Class A office space building. And it's going to be 125,000 square feet. So if you add up two of those buildings, that gets pretty close to this 333,000. So it really puts it into perspective that we can expect the equivalent of two mid-rise office buildings in total in the first 10 years. So it's much less than I think people are expecting. Also, a hotel room, a hotel with 130 rooms. And within that hotel likely will be this meeting space of 16,000 square feet. And then one daycare, but it's not defined in size. And this is just the breakdown of the affordable housing units. They added 50 after the community benefit advisory council met. This is the breakdown by AMI. Most people consider affordable housing to be 80% or lower. So you have 350 at 80 and you have 300 at 60. Not all of these have to be onsite, only 600. And between the 600 onsite, 100 are at 80% AMI or less. And 100 are at 60% AMI or less. So that means 200 onsite are what normal, normally people would consider to be affordable. 100 of those have to be 55 and up communities and have to start construction by 2028. So the stadium will be built by 2028. And then the first deadline is to start construction, not to complete construction, but to start construction for 100 units. And this just shows the schedules and the contrast between the stadium, which is very detailed to completion in 2028. And then a very, you know, open-ended schedule for the rest of the real estate, which is concerning because that's really something important to the community and the city as well as to the potential tax revenue that it could generate. This is a meeting from last week and the three main items on that meeting were extending the in-town CRA, setting July 11th for the voting date and rezoning on seven parcels. And all three votes were the same with three against and five for. There was a lot of things that happened last week. There was a press conference with the Sierra Club. We had a lot of people there to speak who grew up in the gas plant and who were very knowledgeable about the community and don't feel that this is providing the benefits that were promised. Dylan Dames brought up the Southern Poverty Law Center letter that was filed with the city, which will likely result in an actual lawsuit if the deal is approved. And one of the issues within the letter that was referenced was that the land was purchased with assistance from federal money, including HUD and community block development grants, both of which have restrictions on how the property can be used. And it has to be used for the public's benefit, which restricts it from being transferred to a private entity for private profit. And so that may be a legal challenge for this project. It won't be known until they actually file the lawsuit, which can't happen until an action is taken. Alexa grew up in the gas plant. She spoke, she speaks at every event and I've listened to everything that she says. And it's just like, I wonder when people are actually going to start listening to her because she has such an important voice. So that was a great press conference. They talked about the sustainable in components that they would like to see included with the project and they have asked and met with the raise and met with city council and are asking for these items to be included. Also, we worked with Ron Diner and No Home Run and they raised a substantial amount of money through individuals in the, in the city to put together enough money to have a poll completed by the professional polling company, Mason Dixon. It was very important that we went through a professional polling company. So no one could challenge the poll and say that it wasn't a reputable polling company because everyone knows Mason Dixon is a reputable polling company. They surveyed a total of 625 registered voters. And when people ask like, why is it such a small number of voters? If you come down to the third paragraph, it shows that that gives you a 95% probability that the true figure is within that range of four plus or minus percentage points. So that's why that's the size of a group that they used. It was completed from May 29th to May 31st. And if you watch this press release, I highly recommend it. At the end, Ron quotes Bill Foster, who has described this deal, it's horrible. These are some of the poll results. You can see that for people who are familiar with the financing plan, 54% of them opposed the deal. And that's important. And you know, I think sometimes it's surprising because people think that it's higher, but it's really like, a lot of people do want the stadium. But a lot of people don't want the stadium once they find out how much it's going to cost. And I think that's what this poll shows. They also showed that 74% feel that the current proposed financial deal is unfair to city taxpayers. And that's quite high, 74%. You can also see that 86% support getting a new appraisal because the appraisal that we have was from 2028, I'm sorry, 2021. And it was valued at 279 million. But you know, Peter Kent did a presentation a couple of weeks ago and he showed that the land just to the north where the old police station was, I believe was at 17 million an acre. And it's a very similar type of site and it's in the same location. So I don't know how you cannot use that as a comparable. The Mason Dixon poll also showed that 82% of the public believes that city voters should be able to approve or deny the project in a local election referendum. And I think this is something we should remember and continue to talk about with our neighbors and community. Because our representatives have a responsibility to represent our interest. And if 82% of the community feels that there should be a referendum and they're, they skirted that, that's a problem. And I think that we should remember to tell people that that's where people stand. So the community news from last week, there was a redevelopment town hall at the Sunshine Center. There was about 40 people that came. And I thought what was most interesting about that was one person who was in support of the stadium itself. He identified himself as a libertarian. But he said after he learned more about the project, he had a lot of concerns about the actual deal and the terms of the deal. And I think that that's really important because that's what we're really trying to focus on. And I'm not saying we're against the concept, we're just saying that the terms of the deal are very problematic. And I just encourage everyone to check out this Facebook page, St. Pete Community News. Because I try to post every news article that I see that's relative to this project and park it there. So if you want to catch up on the latest news, a lot of the stories are on that Facebook page. And also I would recommend this article by Lizette Hanowitz. It's, talks about the deals and she said the devil is in the details. And one of the problems, among other problems, that the money coming back to St. Petersburg from the purchase price and forecast tax revenue doesn't cover the total debt service. So when people talk about how much tax revenue this development is going to generate, it might generate tax revenue, but we're putting so much money into it with subsidies that we're actually not coming out ahead. So I think that that's really important that people know that and they have to compare both, both components. And this is a great article, The Weekly Challenger featured. And I heard from the, the No Home Run website that they get more click-throughs from this site than almost any other article. So clearly people are reading this and it's very informative about the terms of the deal. So I'm really glad to hear that people are starting to learn more about the terms of the deal. That's so important. And I just found out today in regards to the CBAC recommendations, previously we had recommended that 15% of all hours will be performed by apprentices. And they included it in the infrastructure, but not the vertical construction. But since the first development agreement, now this vertical construction component is included. So that applies also for, I believe the responsible wage possibly, not 100%. But it does apply for the small businesses, minority owned businesses and women owned businesses as well as disadvantaged workers and disadvantaged businesses. So there is an improvement and I thought that was positive that we are seeing that. So here's a, just a list of everyone's emails. And I just think it's so important that people continue to reach out to their city council people. And if everyone can reach out to five people and ask them to also do the same, it really starts to have a ripple effect and we can really have a big impact. So I just really encourage everyone to continue to advocate for their community and for themselves and continue to reach out to council because they might be on vacation, but people are still checking their emails. And this is a really important time for them to get public input. And also if you want a yard sign, just let us know. We have the Strike a Better Deal yard signs. And we just really appreciate the time that you're taking to do this. I hope it's a really good investment for you and that you feel like more, you're more informed and you're more confident about how you feel about this so that you can advocate for yourself and for your community. So I really appreciate your time. I'm going to turn it over now to Alan Delisle. And did you just want to talk, Alan? Are you good to go? You ready to start?
I, I am. I'll just say a few words and then we can just open it up for a discussion. But Carrie, thank you. You've covered as usual most of the issues. I don't want to repeat everything that I have said in the past or gone over the deal. As you know, I focus primarily on the public-private partnership, the real estate piece of it, not the stadium piece. And that has been what I have done professionally for many years, 40, 45 years, probably too long. But this deal, as I've said many times, this is the worst deal I have ever seen in my career. This is the worst deal I have ever seen in my career. I've worked in four cities. I've probably done more public-private partnerships than maybe anybody else in the country. I mean, I've really done quite a few. I did it in Buffalo, did it in Durham, did it in Louisville and did it in St. Pete. And you all know that I concluded that, you know, for a lot of the reasons that Carrie just mentioned, that the, the deal is fundamentally flawed. And there are so many rules and norms in public-private partnerships and in economic development that have been ignored and been dismissed and tried to be explained with what I consider a ridiculous rationale. And so I concluded and again, based on what Carrie has just presented, that this deal is so imbalanced that the private sector usually in a strong market and that I, I want to make sure that I, I underscore that again. There's a big difference when you have an economic development project in a strong market like St. Pete versus a weak market. Where the economic activity just isn't there. Maybe, maybe in a weak market, maybe I would have accepted some of these positions. Maybe. Even that I doubt because it's so over the top. And let me just hit on a couple of those and we, we have been pounding away talking about these issues. I don't relentlessly, I don't want to, you know, revisit all of them. But a couple of them are extremely important. Again, this is on, on the redevelopment side, not on the stadium side. The first mistake that the city made was separating the stadium from the redevelopment. By doing that, they lost all leverage related to the redevelopment side of the equation. And, and therefore, in my humble opinion, ended up spending all of their, all the city money on the infrastructure, which is absurd in a strong market. In fact, I would argue just the opposite, that the private sector should be spending 130 million or 142 million, or at least 130 million on that, on that infrastructure cost. And then of course, and Peter has done an amazing job on this and others. You know, the real estate and the cost of the real estate is, is also absurd. I mean, for for there to be, I mean, if you use the first appraisal that was done two years ago, it's 174 million dollars in lost value. But Peter has shown us that it's really a lot more than that. I think it's like maybe 400 or 500 million of lost value. That's added to the 130 million of the infrastructure. Absurd. You've just never, ever seen anything like this. And I have been disappointed that the, many of the city officials, clearly the mayor and, and the five that voted against or for the CRA last week have, have not addressed that, in my opinion. They, they have not stood up and said, here is why we are going to spend over half a billion dollars on the infrastructure and giving away the land to make this work in a strong market. In an extremely strong, in one of the best markets in the country. It makes no sense. And therefore, you get to a point in all of this where you just say, how can a council member vote for this? And why are, why are they doing it? And the, the only reason, I guess, is because it doesn't matter to them what the city spends to keep the raise. And that's sort of a sad, you know, a sad mirror on the council members that are doing that, in my opinion. I mean, how can you possibly turn your back on the city and say that the rays are more important than, than, than the city? Now, and I think Carrie has indicated this, you can do a deal that works for everybody. You can do a deal that keeps the raise. You can do a deal that works for the city. And we are all on that same page. And that's why we are working so hard to point out all these terrible deficiencies. I've mentioned this before, why? Um, I've mentioned this before, why? Why they agreed to allow the developer? Well, first of all, let me let me just hit some broad strokes here. Um, and try to stay out of the weeds. It's hard. But. Um, the target development, as I've mentioned before, is worthless. Throw it away. It means nothing. Uh, when they talk about everything that's going to be done on site, there is no guarantee in the agreement. That any of that will be done except for the minimum development. And I would argue that even that. Cannot be guaranteed because there are so many outs to the minimum development. Um, and just read the agreement. Um, it basically says that the developer, I I don't even mean to chuckle, but it's just so absurd that the that the private developer. For probably ten or fifteen reasons can delay. Or not do the minimum development. And then the heart of the minimum development is market rate housing. Thirty-eight hundreds of units of market rate housing. The city is gonna spend half a billion dollars for that? You don't have to spend a penny for that. Um, just absurd stuff. Um. Let me, let me um, let me mention. Equitable development. I I I know that. The mayor is running around saying that's the reason why we've got to do this project, equitable development. Um, the percentage that's being applied to MWBEs. Um. Is lower than. All the projects that I saw when I was there in Saint Pete. Ten percent? You gotta be kidding me. We would have been thrown out the window if we would have said ten percent on a project like this. We were looking at twenty percent, thirty percent, uh ten percent? You think that is making up for the past? No. No, it's not. It's absurd. Um, and then the city is paying for all of the community benefits, which is. The opposite of what should be happening. Um. And how do I know that? Because the city put up a slide that said fifty million dollars is gonna be. Deducted from the value of the land to pay for the community benefits. And I believe that the African-American Museum, I think we all understand that that is not a given, right? Um, that that that's that's a long shot. Um. So. I don't, I don't know where that return on investment is. It doesn't seem to be there from my perspective. Uh, the Oakland, the Oakland Cemetery Report, I'm still baffled about that one. Um, I think that that could rear its head in the future. Um. The developer can uh reject. Land, um, having to buy land, um, other than the uh. The fifty million that they have to buy over over twelve years. So I mean, just to reinforce what Carrie was saying, can you believe? That with the minimum development, after the city pours half a billion dollars into the infrastructure. The stadium. And gives gives up all this free land. The first time the developer has to develop something is in year ten. I'm sorry, but there's just no rationality to a yes vote on this deal. There's there's no rationality. So it makes me think that it it has to be a political reason. That they're vote, that they're making this vote. There's no other reason possible after everything that we have pointed out. All the work that you have all done, the community has done, all the facts and figures that we've put forward, never once got. You know, nasty about it, just said, you know, no. I mean, we we just, we're just taking a hard look at this deal. On the, to benefit Saint Petersburg because we love Saint Petersburg. It's a great, great city and we don't want it to be controlled. By the Rays. But let me just say, and I'll end here, Carrie, I promise I'll end here. Let me just say that. That's what a yes vote means from my perspective. It means that you are giving the Rays control of the city. You are saying to the Rays. You are more important than the city. And based on the deal, just based on the deal, this is no emotion on my part whatsoever. But based on the deal, the Rays decide everything. There is nothing deliverable on the city side. The Rays control the future. And it will be so confusing and they will dictate the next ten years. And the only thing you can do is if you vote for this, in my opinion, is to hope for the best. That's all you can do. You can say, because you can't, you, there's nothing in the agreement. That gives you any confidence or any guarantee that anything will be delivered. I I I know that. I I I I've been in this business so long. I I know all of the. Ways that you can get out of things. And there's a million ways to get out of things. The Rays will control. The decision-making process for the next thirty years. And then they'll need a new stadium. All right, I am done. Thank you very much. I just uh wanted to. Kind of put those thoughts on the table in what might be our last broadcast. I'm not sure.
Oh, thanks a lot. Well, thanks so much, Alan. And I just wanted to add on to what you were talking about because I remember early on. When you had commented on the Saint Pete Catalyst and you said the Rays will never pay for infrastructure. And then a few months later, they came back and said, we're gonna get a zero percent loan from the city. For our part of the infrastructure. And then we're gonna pay it back by assessing the future building owners and renters. And you're right. So I think that the public. Just doesn't really understand the terms of the deal. And I sat down with one of my neighbors yesterday for a couple of hours. And when we were in that town hall, we went through the terms of the deal. And someone, like I said, who was in support. Then said, now that I know more about the terms, I understand the concern. And I think that that's really the biggest basis of our group. That we're concerned about the terms of the deal. You know, people try to pretend that it's either you're for the stadium or you're against the stadium. You're either for the stadium and redeveloping the gas plant or you're against, you know. Everything and you just want to have a parking lot. Like, that seems to be how they try to divide us. And they're not talking about the fact that a lot of us are in support. Of redeveloping that property. And that's part of why we're concerned because we don't feel that we have guarantees. That that's gonna happen. And we don't know how it's gonna be managed and when things are gonna be built. And who's going to be building them? And I agree with you. I think that this development agreement. Takes away any control that the city has. And actually exposes us to quite a bit of liability and risk. And it transfers all the upside to a private owner. And. The whole basis was because we're gonna get all this tax revenue. Or we're gonna get all these great buildings that we wouldn't otherwise. Or we're gonna get all this equity and community benefits. And we've seen week by week that the actual minimum development is quite insignificant compared to the renderings. And so the target development's just an imaginary thing. All that matters is what's in the development agreement in writing. And then all the community benefits that were in the impact report, a lot of that didn't make it into the actual development agreement. And a lot of what the Community Benefits Advisory Council asked for. And voted unanimously on was not included in the intention, in the development agreement itself. And you know, it just, it comes down to like, things that just. Seem like they're small in comparison to how much profit the developer is going to receive, like. The fact that they don't want to pay for lead certifications. And they're receiving hundreds of millions of dollars in public money for infrastructure. And I just think that that is indicative of where they're at. Like. They're trying to spend as little bit, as little as possible and they're trying to to make as much as possible and. And you know, it's not much of a deal when you're looking at it like that. And so it's possible that might be something that they include before it goes to a vote. They may say, okay, well, we're gonna comply with lead silver and we're gonna get certification through lead. The US Green Building Council. They may decide they'll do that. But that doesn't mean that they're really improving the deal. And you know, Heinz builds to lead silver all the time with their projects in. DC and San Diego and all over the country. And why are we getting shortchanged? You know, why are we having a a lower quality product when we're investing such a substantial amount of of public funds? So, you know, I I hope as more and more people find out about the terms of the deal. That they realize that the concern lies with the deal itself, not the concept. And um I think it's in everyone's best interest to advocate for a better deal because. The way it's going now, it's very concerning about what's gonna happen. There's just, everything's a question mark. And just like you said, you're kind of hoping for the best. So, you know, it's, Peter is saying normally in his experience. The developer has to pay for the sewage pumping and lift station that's required by the development. And I want to comment on about that because over here in Campbell Park in Thirteenth Street Heights, we had a small developer. Tried to um complete construction of the Shell Dash Town Homes. Where the old historic Shell Dash House used to be located. And they relocated the historic house. And then a developer started to do the due diligence. And because we're on the south side and our infrastructure isn't. Up updated as much as other areas of town, our infrastructure for stormwater was in very poor shape. And I think it was like catch basins and large structures. And the city required the developer to upgrade this, I think it was stormwater infrastructure. And it was so expensive that it kept them from being able to profit on the project. And they actually had to. Get that project to habitant. And so I just think the double standard is pretty stark. You've got a small developer who wasn't able to complete a project. Because it made it so that he could not, you know, cash flow or even break even maybe because he was burdened with. So much infrastructure compared to such a small project, you know? And then on the other hand, you got a billionaire is getting everything for free.
Yeah, to to say that um, you know, we're we're doing, this is the best we can do. I've heard, I've heard that statement a few times. This is the best we can do, so we gotta do it. You know, to keep the Rays. I mean, that that is just, that that is so absurd. That is, that that's in, that's going to Mars. With that.
Why do we have to fund a private real estate development? Adjacent to the stadium in addition to the stadium subsidy itself. I mean, and and they'll like say, well, that's because you're gonna make all this tax revenue or you're gonna get these office buildings. But then when you start looking into that, you see that's not actually gonna happen.
That's right. And you know, and I and I know others may want to weigh in, but I I just wanted to mention, Carrie, one one other thing that just kind of popped into my head. When I was in Louisville, uh, there was a a project there called Whiskey Row. And Whiskey Row is a famous block where the bourbon industry really started. And um, I was there at the time when the the mayor of Louisville. Cut a deal with a developer who owned most of that block to demolish the site. And to do basically, you know, a modern rebuild of that site. And. You know, after after almost a year of working that through and talking with people. And you know, Louisville understanding that, you know, that was kind of their heart and soul, right? That was, that was. That was their soul. Um, they they couldn't possibly, you know, just demolish that site. You know, the business community stepped in, raised raised money for us to make that work. And make it work right. Because it was, you know, it was, it was the city standing up for itself. And leaders stepped in, you know, leaders that said, you know. You know, the city's just too important for us to not step in. And make an impact. And rally the troops. And that whole city kind of turned that agreement around. And got rid of essentially what the mayor had done and instead preserved most of that site. It took a lot of work and a lot of time. But I guess all all of this is to say, I see. I I see those eighty-six acres much like Whiskey Row.
Yeah, and you know, I think that we've seen some of our council members like work. You know, overtime, trying to advocate for the public. And you know. They're so restricted because they only have so much time as far as when they can speak in a meeting. And. Some of them have been going to neighborhood associations and doing presentations, sending out emails to inform their community. So again, there's a huge contrast between different city council representatives and who they're prioritizing. You know, and and it's just, I think it comes down to like you were talking about, like. Are we doing this for the public? Are we doing this for the Rays? And at the end of the day, it's it's our tax dollars that we work so hard. To pay and we have so many unmet infrastructure needs. So it's just very tough because of the priority. And um, I'm just gonna read through some of the. Yeah, Peter had a great comment. He said extending the CRA for another ten years is reverse socialism. It's taking taxes from the poor and giving it to the Rays Heinz billionaires. It's seriously, it's. People have, I mean, what people have to go through to pay their property taxes. And I had my friend who does some house painting for me tell me how. They were in crisis trying to figure out how to pay their forty-five hundred dollar tax bill because they don't have a mortgage. And he thought they were gonna lose the house. And he was afraid that someone was gonna go to the um. County and buy his house out from under him the day that he was delinquent in his taxes. And. He got a job to paint a church and luckily was able to make the payments. But then he said, well, for the future, I'm gonna set aside money every week. He said, I'm gonna set aside fifty dollars every week. So I can pay my property taxes. And I thought about that and I said, no, you've got to set aside over a hundred dollars a week. Just for your property taxes. And you know, maybe if you have a high-paying job, that's not a big deal. But if you're making your income. Like going door-to-door to paint houses. I mean, it's it's a lot of money to have to come up with every month or every year. And to to pretend like this project, somebody somehow gonna benefit people like him, I just think it's insulting. You know, and that's the one thing the city can control is trying not to increase our property taxes as far as our cost of living goes. Um, there's some questions here. Rebecca said, yeah. It's like we're planning for the year two thousand with no mention of sustainable development. And so little open space and that we need to be thinking about planning for a new century with zero environmental impacts. And that just goes back to the fact that we're contributing hundreds of millions of dollars of infrastructure funds. And we can't even get any kind of sustainability incorporated into the the project and it doesn't even meet our city goals. So it it just doesn't make any sense. Um. You know, he he asked Rebecca if we should try to meet with Gina or anybody else. And you know, one of the things I was gonna suggest as anyone who's in Gina's district is if they. Me too. And Cindy and Susan, um, Tom. So. Potentially, all of us could put together a group that wants to advocate for a better deal. As a collective group between our neighborhoods. Um, and some of these other southside neighborhoods who have concerns and have been talking about it individually. So. Maybe that's something that we can talk about so we could communicate that we have. Interest too, and we have needs. It's not just about the business districts that are advocating for this. It's about the taxpayers and the public's needs. And and we have a right to express those interests. So. After this, let's talk about whether we can collaborate on that. I think it's a good idea, Rebecca.
Hey, Carrie, just wanna weigh in. One of the question, one of the point, Tom has kind of said that. You know, while we say it's a worse deal, Gina says all the other teams will be jealous. Let, I I mean, from my perspective. Every team in the world would be. Every team in the world would be jealous of this deal. I agree with that. Oh, my God. I mean, Stu got everything he wanted and more. But every city is is not gonna be jealous of this deal. The the these, every city in in the country. Is gonna say someday, oh, my God, thank God, we didn't do what St. Pete did to try to keep a sports team. Right. There's no doubt in my mind about that.
No, and and Cindy is asking, well, what are the political reasons? And I think you nailed it. It's all about baseball. When people start talking about baseball, it's like rational thinking doesn't necessarily apply anymore. And I think that that's exactly what's going on is that the city council people wanted that support the deal. Wanna keep the Rays and they're afraid if they don't give them everything that they want. That they'll leave because that's what they do is they threaten to leave. And Peter made up a really good point. He brought up a really good point, which is that the MLB. Plans to expand and add two teams.
Yeah.
And the MLB is who makes the decision, not the Rays. The Rays is a franchise. And they're beholden to the MLB. And I think that's something that as a city, we need to remember. Because we have a lot of leverage. We have the land, we have the funds. And we have the best deal. You know, is this far along compared to any other city. So we. Really have a lot of room to negotiate. They're not just gonna up and leave because there's no way. Another city could could make a good offer like this. And then they're like, oh, well, people say they're gonna go to Tennessee. And they don't wanna be here. And it's like, well, we have to spend everything that we have in our city and. Put our city into financial dire straits, then maybe we can't afford it. You know, maybe we really can't afford it. That's what they want to say. But. Peter said the MLB will not allow the Rays to move to a new city. That would otherwise pay the MLB for one of these expansion licenses. So that's a really good point. The MLB wants them to stay and get the deal done. And it just reinforces the fact. That we have all the leverage and we don't need to act like we're desperate to keep the Rays. Like we have so much to offer. And I just, I really hope that our our elected representatives. Will act with that in mind. And we need to continue to pressure them to do so. And I just hope that we can continue to advocate and organize and and make sure that our representatives know where we stand and to represent our interests. Does anybody else have another question? You know, we can always follow up throughout the week. And we do have this recorded, Susan. We'll get this sent out maybe as early as tonight, but tomorrow we'll get you a chance to get a copy of it. And just thanks again for everyone's time. Really great to see you guys. And we'll stay in touch. We'll keep at it.
Thanks, everybody.